Call the meeting to order any items from the public.
Sir.
Please come and state your name for the record.
My name is Nathan Harmon.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Call the meeting to order any items from the public.
Sir.
Please come and state your name for the record.
My name is Nathan Harmon.
Good morning.
Good morning. I've only got five minutes, so I may pack for a.
Action three, but we'll give you five.
Great, okay, well, I appreciate that. I'll try to speak pretty quickly. In your packet, what you have is a law enforcement accredited nationally certified accident avoidance course. After reading the article the other day from the current administration for the sheriff's office, there's many, many mistakes in that article in regards to the perception of driver's training, hands-on, reality-based driver training. There's a five-year study in your packet that has a green cover on it. It has statistics in it that shows a drastic reduction in risk of injury and damage to an injury to the driver and damage to the vehicle in itself. The state police took part in documenting the, the state police Jefferson County Sheriff's Office took part in documenting a part of this five-year study in reverse traffic accidents for a train group and an untrained group. The train group went through this accident avoidance course. I want to refer to the article just a little bit in regards to four separate occasions within the administrator, the sheriff's statement that says that he attributes the mistakes to human error. And that is exactly what we crane up there in regards to the mental decisions made by a driver in a stress-induced exercise. There are several stress-induced exercises that are incorporated within the accident avoidance course. I've taken this accident avoidance course as early as 2016 and certified it nationally and took the accident avoidance study and applied it towards law enforcement training. The morning portion in your packet, you'll see the schedule contains everything that is contained within the accident avoidance course. The accident avoidance course was originally put together for your more novice drivers or drivers that need additional training who have had accidents or multiple accidents. The unfortunate part in regards to law enforcement, we would not see an officer until they're about five recs in. And we do have a good relationship with law enforcement and we try to get them up there as much as possible to take advantage of this training. The other thing that I did with this law enforcement accident avoidance course was I gave it additional fees. Officers are required to have 16 hours a year of in-service training. This, this course through Charleston through law enforcement professional standards is certified for eight hours of training. So not only do you have national accreditation in regards to five professors looking at this curriculum and flow, best practices, grammar, plagiarism, and all the other rigors of testing in regards to vetting this course and the curriculum, but you also have law enforcement officers that vet the course and serve by the course. At the end of the course, there is a pass fail test. This test that they take is the same exact test that the State Department special agents take before they go overseas. It does go into high-speed driving and if you look as early as last night in regards to an hour and 20 minutes of a pursuit that occurred with the sheriff's office, this is something that they need. It does go into distracted driving as the Mr. Vice President had mentioned earlier in a council meeting, we do do that. So for a statement to be made that all BSR does is high-speed driving up there is a gross misunderstanding of what exactly we do up there. And I invite each and every one of you up there as my guests to take part in a regular standard accident avoidance course at your leisure. That's why my business card is contained within the folder. And so you can call me, my personal cell phone number's on there, my email is on there. And if you want to physically see what is exactly we do, I'd be more than happy to give you a tour. There's an FBI study in there that talks about 2018 fatalities involving officers. And there's also a course syllabus for you in regards to the rapid deployment tactics that we did offer this administration for free of charge that is the one of the few things that is correct and not awful. So we did offer that, that pertains to active shooter situations and so I've included the syllabus for that as well. I thank you for your time. I hope this is beneficial to you and I just wanted to finally put this to bed in regards to what it is we do up there. It's not just high-speed driving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. Anything else from the public?
Morning, counsel. Wanted to take a couple of minutes.
Who are you?
Brian Ross, engineering director. Sorry, James. I forgot A H everything, you know, sorry. Hey, I wanted to take a minute to introduce our new hire, which you guys allowed me to increase my staff. His name is Stephen Four. He was an inspector in Stafford County, Virginia. He, it's a blessing that we got him on staff. He carries multiple certifications through ICC in residential and commercial. And he's basically two certifications shy of a code official exam. Just a couple of days that I've spent with him, he's very knowledgeable. We were out in the field yesterday and comparing how Stafford County does things versus how Berkeley County does things. And it's amazing, they're a lot more strict on some things than we are and some things we're a little more strict than they are. So it was a good back and forth conversation. I would like to personally recognize Ms. Shoal and Mr. Davis yesterday and the day before for spending time with, with Stephen and answering any questions that he may have, because I know they have busy schedules, so.
Just as a point of clarification, it's not an increase in staff, it's backfilling existing vacancies.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry, I guess I need to clarify that. We added, but. Right. Sorry about that, it was a bad clarification on that.
No, that's no problem. So Stephen, welcome aboard. There's some things happening in Virginia that we want to keep in Virginia right now, but.
He's moving up here.
But welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to a good, strong relationship.
As am I.
Yeah, yeah, Brian spoke highly of you and you know, we've got a great team and Brian's worked hard to get that team and thank you.
I look forward to contributing to it.
All right.
Thank you.
We may have crossed paths. I was doing some work down in Stafford or working for a company in Stafford at Eagle's Point.
Oh, yeah?
By overlook, all those places down there. Wasn't for me. We just did a lot of dirt work in there through the company that works.
Looking forward to coming up here.
Good, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen is a, we've had an opportunity to get to know each other a little bit. He's a marine veteran.
That's right, sir. Army, the Navy guys there.
They drove us around.
I could see you feel pretty comfortable already.
It's all in good fun.
It's good to have a show for it.
Better get your water wings, because it's going to take the most of them.
That was a good way to put, put that, so. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other items from the public? Says we're having so much fun here this morning. Need a motion to approve the.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Purchase order, any questions for Tracy? All right, we have two internal budget revisions, Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. Both of your internal budget revision requests are from the Honorable John W. Small Jr., your county clerk. The first request is Department 402 County Clerk's Budget. Mr. Smalls requesting that he be allowed to decrease line 341 supplies and materials by $50. Current unencumbered fund balance is $18,660.38 with 27.21% spent to date. An increased line 218 postage by $50. That account currently has a deficit balance of $25.50.
All right, he's going to increase postage by $50. Doesn't he have to buy more postage by the end of the year?
Well, we do postage for the normal day-to-day mailings. This is primarily FedEx, things like that, eBay, I don't know.
So there may be another.
He didn't, he didn't have anything in his budget.
No, but you know, this is only January.
Maybe he's not planning on using FedEx.
Well, he's only spent $25 so far this year, six, seven months, you know, so.
The second request is for Department 421, which is civil service. Mr. Smalls requesting that he be allowed to decrease line 223 professional services by $2,000. Current unencumbered fund balance is $11,300 with nothing spent to date. An increased line 220 advertising publications by $2,000. Current unencumbered fund balance is $966.59 with 61.33% spent to date. That request is being made to cover potential advertising funding deficit deficit with some public hearing notices that Civil Service Commission will be doing shortly.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Davis on that? And if not, we have change in status, letter of resignation received from prosecuting attorney's office for Tamara McCormick effective January 24, 2020. A letter resignation received from council office for Susanna Henderson effective January 31, 2020. Letter resignation received from the court marshal's office for Paul Chikola the 2nd effective January 30, 2020. Letter resignation received from central dispatch for Georgia Moore effective January 17, 2020. Any questions on changes status? I guess you're going to get more applicants?
Yes, sir.
Get that process started.
It's been over a year since we advertised last for grants administrators, so we'll have the recruitment notice prepared. Of course, didn't want to send it out until you accepted this Henderson's resignation, so I'll get on that tomorrow.
I tried to talk some sense enters. Haven't been successful. You're, you're trying to instill sense in the herd. Yeah, and it didn't work, Jim. I, I was wondering how that turned out. You probably, you concur with that, right? Don't you be jumping in.
He's being awful vocal today on that.
All right, we have approval minutes. Everyone who was present for January 9, 2020, any questions on those or changes?
We have the county council calendar. We'll be in the chambers here 9:30 next Thursday and we are starting board review and equalization on 2 o'clock of next Thursday. That time of the year. Boards and commission, we have library board tonight at 5:00 PM. Have historic landmarks at 1:00 PM on Monday the 27th, 4:00 PM health board, 5:00 PM water district. Next Thursday, which is a meeting with the ambulance authority, which is normally tonight, has been changed to the 30th at 5:30 here in the chamber. And we have Heather Williams Planning Director on WEPM, 9 AM on Friday the 31st. Any changes on boards and commissions? On release, we have the Roach family limited partnership overlook at Riverside. Lots 1 through 13 and 127 through 133 and 178 through 193. Engineering department has made that recommendation. Don't see dirt this morning. And then we have a grading bond reduction for the Roach family limited partnership overlook at Riverside. Tracking number R01777-18. Engineering department has made those recommendations. Questions on those?
Dirk has assured us that stormwater management has been addressed and will not be affected by even one of these requests. We have DAV import software here all day today and all day tomorrow. Continue the implementation of the planning and engineering software, so you probably won't see those folks much in the next two days.
All right, if not, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion been made?
Second.
Seconded, any discussion? Not all favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Good morning, Mr. House. Have some tax exoneration for us this morning?
I do. Good morning. I have a total of six, we have to correct. They are all personal property, office air, and there are five of them, sorry, for the reasons that's listed there. Total them up, they all come up to $837.32.
They're all due to office air.
Yes.
Entertain a motion on the five personal tax exoneration due to office air.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the five personal tax exoneration due to office air in the amount of 837.
32.
32.
Second. Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Would it be a possibility, Mr. House, to maybe just put a total amount at the bottom of your, all your calculations?
We could do that.
Just, just one more column that just says total?
We could do that.
That way we're not up here checking your math all the time.
Okay. If we could do that.
Or we can check it before you come up.
Well, I always thought you did anyway.
We will now.
I know how some people are with numbers.
I'll do that. All right, thank you.
All right, board meeting reports?
Thank you, Mr. President. Had new meetings this week, so I'll give it on to a lane.
You're going to give all your time to Ms. Malka?
Yep, yep.
It's been one of those weeks that I had everybody's meetings. We started with Parks and Recreation, a lot of good things happening there. They are working very diligently to get their 501(c)(3) C, working with lawyers to move that forward as recommended by our, our grants committee. They got an approval for a block grant at the East Burke Street area, which will be 20,000 on the south side for a half-court basketball and a parking lot. And 30,000 will be for the linear park on the west side. So it's, it's moving right along. There are Dana D. Jurnay, the help promotion, has put $5,000 to map the Fourhouse Farm trails. So this is significant because that was one of the issues. I had a lot of people wanting to walk and do some things, but they didn't know where the Frisbee Court was and where this was and that was and the quote across and everything else. And so this way they'll be able to cover the whole property. The lake, Lake Record, they're currently dredging and they, they, it looks like they're going to be able to get the deep end finished in the next couple of days. And hopefully by the end of next week, maybe over the following week to have the shallow end done.
You know how deep the deep end is?
I have no idea. I just know that they've been dredging and just stacking the, because it's been colder, they can get the equipment in. So they're just dredging and piling the residue on the side and then after, when it starts getting warmer, then they're going to remove it because they just had to get in there.
And they're going to use it on the core apartment.
Right now, they're just doing a total, a location so that it can be used for future use. I don't know if it would be enough to cover out the LCS property or not. Because we needed for soccer fields because of course that's rip back.
With that long arm they've got out there, they could definitely make it deep.
Yes.
I think they're for certain depth, you have to get approval from.
They've got all their approvals and all their permits.
Hey, you know, it's under what?
In fact, they had given them a three-year permit and then they had an issue with everything getting too much water and all this other. And the volume of water, they keep thinking they've got it under control and the system is just continuing that they're fighting the water that's going in there because of the number of springs. When it's all said and done, they're hoping that the project will be less than 50,000. And then they have to do a final step with the seven to $8,000 aeration system on the deep end. And like a foul on the shallow end to keep the, that will keep down the growth. They said it should take care of it for 30 years. So it's, that was interesting. And then, of course, the highlights of the meeting was boss Poland donating the 100,000. And then, of course, the highlights of the meeting was, uh, boss Poland donating the hundred thousand, um, to, so that the project with Mr. Smith and of course, um, he's not going to be seen, but he's in the audience. Uh, the project will be finished in the near future and the dedication will be in May for that project and also for the goldy givens because the family wants to come here for that event. And so it's going to be scheduled in May. Um, the next thing was the visitor center and we had a, they had a planning meeting talking about trying to deal with the assets that Berkeley County has. Um, because the state has come up with tourism is outdoor world. And of course, people fail to realize all the nice outdoor things that we do have here in Berkeley County. And everything from the trails and trees, which is the tours for the arts, motocross, paintball, the National Peacemakers, uh, range, uh, rock climbing out at the O G M place and outdoor bushcraft school. So we have something that we've got to come up with a plan on how to advertise those. The rock climbing thing, they didn't realize that the, they had an amateur contest out there recently and no one even knew about it. It was advertised in another town somewhere on the billboard. So someone saw that, so they're trying to get up, uh, scope of pictures of what's going on so that, uh, with down the road with Mark Train, oh, you come here for this event, here are the options in the world of the, of the.
So river riders down in, uh, Jefferson County, um, they actually do a pretty good job. So what they do is they put packages together because they own the hotel there and they put packages together so you can come out and stay. And then they bus people to do all these different things in the, in the area. So I've seen, and, and I've seen their buses in Berkeley County more in the last month than I've ever seen before.
Well, the C V B has just put out an application for an individual, uh, more or less of a tour guide. It's probably similar and it'll be, to start with, it's going to be a part-time position till, till they see what kind of volume they can build up between the buses and all the different locations, historically speaking, and all the other type of locations. So, uh, that's the direction they're going in.
That list, that list you gave, outdoor list?
Yeah.
That's, that's not comprehensive.
No, that was just, we were planning to cover.
I don't know if you mentioned the Four Farms, St. Dupree.
Yeah, all of that was in, in the mix of, of all the different things, but they also hired, they're going to be hiring someone. And the good news, the bad news is that Samantha has now got another job in Alexandria, so.
Oh, really?
She has now finished as of the thirty-first. So, uh, uh, she's been with us for several years. Uh, and then, uh, we've dealt, I had Main Street meeting and, uh, Main Street, of course, membership drive is January twenty-ninth. And of course, it was this planning meeting with all the different events for the full year. And they'll be coming out, of course, with flyers, this, this is the membership folder. And then, of course, they are going to be applying for funds with the county and the city. And last but not least was the Economic Development Vitality Committee, which is more or less the economic, uh, meeting, part of the Main Street. And, um, the, one of the, a couple of new things, you're getting ready to do a program on how to open a business as far as workshops concerned. They're going to have, um, a street sense, which will be put on by the police, which is going to be February twenty-fourth at six o'clock at the hub. And then, last but not least, there's a new grant program put out by the West Virginia Preservation Alliance, uh, twenty-five hundred to ten thousand. It's a loan that's repayable over two years with a fixed rate of two percent for new businesses. For downstairs, like I said, they're going to redo a sign or a window or something in that, that project, so. Uh, and then, last but not least, they're working on their mural updates because the murals were done. Um, so quite a few years ago with the different figures like the Pac Wilson on the Pinky Building and all these different things, they, they're going to work on updating those because as, as time goes on, they got more. So that is one of the other projects, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whitaker?
Yes, sir, we had a planning commission meeting on Tuesday since Monday was the holiday. Um, it was a very short meeting, it lasted about ten minutes, it was mostly administrative, it would be done. Uh, I was on the radio on Tuesday, uh, W R N R, talked about, uh, Project Ferrari down as well as sheriff's office needs and things like that, and what else? And about family, they were, and, um, Rob and I have a background in each of, uh, the Italian side, so they couldn't figure out how Whitaker became an Italian.
Yeah, yeah.
We had a little bit of a discussion.
It ended up out there.
No, it doesn't, but, but it works out.
Hell, yeah.
Um, I did not attend the super meeting, I had a conflict dealing with some developments.
Great, all right, and I had no.
Mr. President, I've got something.
Okay.
The Martin Luther King dinner was past weekend, uh, Sunday, and of course, the association has given out a hundred ninety thousand. Uh, and we had a gentleman, Reverend Lori Johnson, who, um, was a dynamic speaker. And, uh, we, uh, we're hoping, um, that we can get them at this nickel and, and forward. And we are going to give out a minimum of twelve thousand, one thousand dollar scholarships that are to be used for anything, it doesn't have to be used for books or tuition. And, uh, deadline for scholarship application is through the Eastern West Virginia Community Foundation is, is February twenty-eighth. So any student that is a senior that wants to apply, make sure you, you get, get into that, that mix because, uh, last year we had a hundred applicants. So I just wanted to mention that because we're streaming and I want to make sure the public can, those scholarships are there.
All right, thank you. All right, any activity on boards and commissions?
Yes, sir, I'd like to apply, uh, appoint David McCollough to a full three-year term for the St. Berkeley County Senior Services.
All right, motion been made, seconded, any discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Also, I'd like to have a setup and appointment to interview these guys.
Then we'll roll right back to you, Ms. Muff, on honorary county council person.
This story, you want to come up here? Want to tell these folks where you go to school and what you're interested in, or if you're more into college, or sports, or activities, whatever?
So I'm Tori Wayright and I go to the Faith Christian Academy. And, um, I am looking to go into nursing after high school, I'm going to go to college and then maybe join on.
Good. So college, uh, Shepherd has a great nursing program, is that where you go?
Um, maybe, I'm going to go to college. I state of mind, swear affirm, that I will hold the constitution of the United States and Virginia. That I will guard and so responsible. So it is responsible of the office of honor.
Next on our agenda is Mr. Davis, uh, county administrator for two new K-nine vehicles for the sheriff's department, we spoke about that a couple of weeks ago.
Yes, sir, if the council will recall, um, on Thursday, January ninth, Sheriff Keller and Chief Deputy Wilson appeared before the council to discuss a number of vehicle issues. Um, during that discussion, they did request, uh, that the council allow them to purchase two new, uh, vehicles for their K-nines, uh, out of the concealed weapons fund. Uh, they would purchase vehicles and equip the vehicles. Um, as you know, the, the vehicles would then be titled, um, to the county council, uh, at which time you would be, the council would be, uh, responsible for insurance, insurance and maintenance. At that time, council president, Open Haven, requested, um, a week or so to, to consider the request and ask to be back on the agenda. So, and I see Chief Wilson, oh, there you are, um, Chief Wilson couldn't see because of the glare.
He's a real one, you're talking.
Chief, chief. Never, never fails, that's, that's okay.
It's a warm and fuzzy welcome around here this morning.
The only person for Mrs. Gary to beat that, that recent, so, that's okay. I still got some on the side, it's my budget, he can't claim that.
I guess, uh, chief, the one thing we talked about, uh, two weeks ago now is, uh, about the sheriff purchasing these, uh, K-nine vehicles out of the gun fund since we didn't have it in our budget. Um, and the one thing that was discussed, and I just want to confirm that, uh, when we, when, when these two vehicles go in, actually, in order for us to show them, they go on our insurance, which means they have to be titled in our county council. Um, and that two vehicles will come off the road and these will replace them.
That's great, we, we discussed about the increase in size, it is not an increase in size of the fleet, it would replace, uh, two existing vehicles we have. We did ask for consideration for possibly one of those to be transferred to the reserves because they do have a cannon that they use. But it is not an increase in our fleet and we do understand they have to be titled, we went through this about a year ago with vehicles that will be titled in the county commission, um, county council, excuse me. The, the understanding is that we will purchase the vehicles and we will also pay for the equipping, uh, of the vehicle and equipment for this.
And you talk about that because myself and Mr. Masters met, uh, probably about six months ago and their fleet is aging. And I guess for, for Mr. Masters and, and Mr. Rinker, uh, I, I would think that if they did the same thing we're talking about, if you take one of your vehicles that's better than one of their vehicles.
And transfer.
And they got rid of one.
Yes, sir, we would definitely, we would definitely look at that as well.
Yeah, and Mr. Wine would have to look at that and make sure that, you know, we're going to pass it on some lemon or something.
And I've been actively engaged with, with Mr. Wine in reference to the vehicles and those matters as well, so yes, we would do that.
Okay, all right.
The only other thing I want to add is, um, the chief indicated when they were in here two weeks ago that, um, they keep one additional vehicle for each shift.
Okay, for shift, yes, yes, sir, we currently have that assigned, we do have three vehicles assigned, one to each shift is a spare vehicle in case somebody screws down.
The, the only thing that has changed between January ninth and today is, um, the two thousand fifteen Ford Taurus that was involved on the, uh, the auto accident interstate eighty-one on January first, which was not fault of the deputy.
That is correct, sir.
Um, that vehicle has been declared a total loss. Um, we kind of suspected it, it would be, we just received notification yesterday.
We've been waiting, yes.
We suspected that it would be because the extent of the damage it did declare, it, it did, um, uh, the, the airbags were deployed. So that vehicle has been declared total loss with a value of eleven thousand, so six hundred fifty dollars with a thousand dollar deductible. Um, we're in the process of now working the, our central garage is working with the risk pool to determine whether we're going to keep the vehicle or not. Um, also, if there's any equipment in the vehicle that was damaged as part of the accident, we need to get that inventory to the risk pool so that we can get that under handling.
Okay, I'll work that today, I don't believe there was, but I'll, well, I take that back, there would have probably been some lights in the grill and stuff like that, I don't think anything major.
Since you were in, we just received that notification yesterday.
I'll, I'll have Mr. Scales get all that today, sir.
So now we're down to two thousand fifteen.
The only other thing, chief, is the sheriff did say that he would outfit the vehicle as well.
The, the K-nine vehicles were coming, yes, sir, that is correct, we'll pay, we'll purchase the equipment and pay for the installation as well, that is correct.
Okay, all right, so I need a motion on the, um, two new K-nine vehicle, anyone opposed?
Helps everybody out, so. Well, thank you, sir, appreciate that, thank you all.
The two male hygiene vehicles, yes, sir, will be here tomorrow.
Oh, the trip vehicles, I, I knew they was on route, uh, I'd seen the information, didn't know it was wrapped.
Received that notification yesterday also, they will deliver to Mac tomorrow.
Well, good, we can use them, we're sure to use those vehicles a lot these days.
So that purchase is a, is, uh, through the gun fund as well as, as the general fund, so.
One, one, all right.
That was another pop route. Well, we're purchasing.
I understand, yeah.
An amount equal to, uh, the two Dodge Durangos and anything above that.
They're paying, they're paying.
And we.
And I signed the purchase order yesterday.
Already signed the purchase order and we've requested the check be cut so that we can hand it to them upon delivery.
Make sure, I thought it was being taken there.
It's all taken care of, so we are, that, that will be taken care of tomorrow. So that'll be two more vehicles to be taken off.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. One quick plug I'd like to throw in real fast for animal control, because I seen Chief Jones back there. I think they sent, uh, some statistics and everything and I hope everybody's taking a look at that. These folks do an outstanding job every day with what they do to take care of animals and take care of things in the public and they keep things at a minimum. You look at their budget and see what we don't have to increase because of the, the fees that they collect and stuff to help. I think they do a, an extremely great job, so just, I, I appreciate the attention that you all give and I know we try to keep you informed when things happen, but they do a fantastic job.
Kevin does, does do a wonderful job and, and I, I am behind on my emails because I'm in so busy. Um, but one thing I'll, I'll say is there's more people out there interested in Kevin's dogs than there is the county council on social media.
I'll leave that alone. We wish we could have too.
Next on our agenda is, uh, March Bone, Director of Farmland Protection Board, requests for authorization to close on conservation easements. Good morning, sir, how you doing?
We're doing great. Been a while since I've been before you, but it's not like you haven't been busy. Um, these seven easements are half of my current workload, I'm actively pursuing closing easements on fourteen properties, the board just selected an additional three for this funding year. And I'm waiting on a, an additional property, um, that we've submitted for matching funds with the presidency. But the seven listed, um, are the ones that I'm, I'm close enough on that it's time to seek permission. Um, three of those, uh, the ones that are listed as having, uh, W V D E P funding, Halbert Walton Three and Burkhardt ending with a T, are, um, the second time in West Virginia that U.S. EPA Clean Water Act funds have been used to acquire easements, and I'm quite proud of that. And actually, the first time I came before you all, that netted, uh, uh, an invite to a national conference to be able to present our results. And, um, we, uh, continue as the only county in the state that, um, that's made progress on that.
That's on Back Creek?
Yes, those are all three on Back Creek. Um, a couple of the properties are on Back Creek, but the majority of these represent working farms. Um, the seven in total would, um, protect an additional six hundred acres and, um, we're seeking permission to be able to move forward on closing them.
All right. So you do have a little bit of federal money on the spare road, it looks like, right?
And I have three others that have matching federal funds that are in the pipeline. Those projects typically take a lot longer time to close than, um, our local online funding.
Right, right, it looks like the state has stepped it up a little bit.
Yes, again, that was a, I, um, and I should also thank the West Virginia Conservation Agency, they co-wrote the grant with me, um, on the W, uh, the D E P funding. Um, the Conservation District, Eastern Panhandle's been supportive of that and of course, the folks, the staff of the Department of Environmental Protection.
So a lot of money, actually, I might have missed, but the, actually, a lot of the money is coming from local money.
Uh, yes, we've been setting more money aside for local funding because the N R C S, which for years has been a, uh, a working funding partner with us, have gotten, first of all, their funding has been cut, so there's only about a million to a million, um, and a half for the entire state. We now have twenty-one farm land protection boards in the state, so it's been more competitive. Uh, but there have been some structural changes with the farm bill that just went offline, um, in December twenty nineteen. And so there's going to be some problematic changes, but the prior farm bill caused real problems for a lot of the counties in West Virginia. And we found, in addition, that closings were taking forever, we had property owners that were pulling either out of frustration because of the length of the process or that farm bill had certain mandatory practices which would run with the land forever, and when farmers were carrying that, they were pulling. And that happened not only in Berkeley County, but in Hampshire County, Grant, Mineral Counties that had these huge, beautiful working farms, um, had properties that were pulling because of these owners restrictions. Uh, nationally, conservation organizations petitioned Congress, we, um, were effective at getting, in particular Senate agriculture at the federal level to finally remove some of these restrictions, and so those are working their way through. And so I hope, over the next couple of years, you see, we have more matching funds with the N R C S. But this is representing a backlog that had to do with a farm bill that for five years just had some really unacceptable conditions for a lot of property owners.
All right, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the seven farms to the action.
Motion been made. Second? Seconded. Any discussion?
Go to Wake Creek.
Just under 600.
26.8971.
And then the easement acres is the actual that will be protected. So that's 597.971.
What's that make us, 60?
This will take us to 62 easements totaling about 6,300 acres.
Mark, I'm sure there's multiple times that somebody's coming into you about a farmland easement that you would like to do that doesn't fit your program. Correct?
That actually doesn't happen very frequently. The, the cases I would think of would be if the use is currently like industrial, commercial, there'd be that kind of structural problem with the land. I, I get some applicants where the property is small and simply doesn't, it's not competitive either with our local funding, with any of our other funding partners. We still encourage those people to apply. But I, in my memory, in the five years I've been here, I can't recall one where I've had where I've had to tell them, no, you can't, you can't go forward with this.
Does, does your evaluation consider business growth in Berkeley County as, as one of the qualifications or disqualifications for property?
It, it does not. We locally award points for properties that are under development pressure, but we also award properties or award points in that same kind of scheme for properties that have environmental features like large acreage dissection or maybe on the stream where it freaks its name.
And the reason I'm asking is it would sound, it would seem to me that there would be a, a thought process of responsible, responsible growth area. For example, I-81 corridor, if you have, if you have a property that's close to an exit or something like that, if, if those properties become farmland exempt, then you're pushing, you're pushing industrial development or, or commercial development on past that, those areas and, and creating a more of a traffic issue for the community down the road.
Yeah, it's an interesting point. Actually, it's almost as if it's self-limiting right now. It's not that our scheme awards or doesn't award points. As you're talking, I'm going through my mind. I have one property that's the current applicant that's on US Route 11, but I don't have a single property that's in current application pool or that was accepted. It's anywhere near any of the interstate interchanges. And so there may be self-limiting simply from the property owners themselves.
Just for the value of it.
But if one came in besides the, we award points again for having public waters who are either on the property or close, for having road frontage on some of the major roads, we do award points for that, but those are offset against awarding points for more classic agriculture for being kind of in more quiet parts of the county. The only thing that we do kind of that speaks to economics is that we award points for the, the value of agricultural produce that's coming off of property. And that's as it's reported through the assessor's valuation forms. We, and use the assessor's office when they stamp that form with approval and a farmer is declaring that they, they're claiming $87,000 worth of income. That's what we use as a metric to award points in that category. But that's the only one that really relates to economics.
Do you have a map, a trivia mark of a map of all the properties that you do have?
We do. We use GIs.
Can you send us a copy of that?
We, we certainly can.
Email all of us a copy of it.
I can do that. Just here in a few minutes.
If you want to send it to the penning.
Very good.
Alright.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. It's always good to see you.
Thank you. Good to see you all.
That made me something nice.
We did though.
No, we have not. I made the motion.
Somebody distracted me. That's what happened. Alright, we got a second? Alright, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Next on our agenda is Donnie Plotner, chief of voters, registration, extended emergency absentee voting policy for primary election.
Good morning. I'm five minutes early.
You had a long walk, that's why.
I did. Okay, I'm here to talk about and present the policy and procedure for the emergency elections for the May primary. This is an existing policy that hasn't changed any, but it does need the council approval to send to the Secretary of State's office. Do you want me to read this?
We all have it in our read. Have anybody got any questions for Mr. Plotner? Uh, the emergency absentee policy is extended to the following hospitals: Jefferson, Berkeley, VA, Winchester, around Hagerstown.
We have never gone to Hagerstown. We can add that.
I don't know if there's any.
Yeah.
Where, if you have Winchester, I can use it.
Well, I think we're probably more, more of our folks in this area tend to be, if they're in a hospital, they have a lot of Winchester hospitals. That's why I was coming up to that.
I think, I think that point.
Hagerstown's less expensive.
As well as Berkeley Springs.
There is actually a mile limit on it. So, and we're due for three hours, okay? So, but no, if you, if we, if you think it's best to add Hagerstown, we can add Hagerstown in there.
There are people.
I think it's a good idea. I think they're trying to say, yes, they want to.
Okay.
Now, this policy, this is a state policy that we're adopting?
Yes. I mean, the, the counties actually have the option, option to adopt one at all. So we've always had one, because we have had calls. In 2016, we had quite a few calls for Winchester. Once we got there, all of a sudden it was kind of like everyone heard that the, the ballot commissioners were there and said, oh, wait a minute, well, I want to vote too. But it's really only in a case where someone had planned to vote on election day, didn't vote early and actually was due to some illness in the hospital within those three days when early voting ended and election day begins. So there is a criteria to meet that.
But it's only good for the primary and not the general election.
It's, we could do it for the general as well. Yeah, we always have one for each election. We have our policy.
Alright.
But I'll add Meredith's Health Center on there as well.
Need a motion to approve. Motion been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion with the change?
Is that with the change?
Right. With the change.
Give the president authorization.
Authorization, sir.
Alright.
I'll make that change and send it to the penning.
Alright. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Donnie, I have a quick question. I'm going through budgets for this fiscal year in preparation for next fiscal year. I know that we, the school board had the special levy election. Have you built the school?
We are in the process of still forming that together.
Okay.
But yeah.
Because the, the only reason I question that is we have a primary election coming up in May and there's currently not funding in 413 to, to support it.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. We're looking at probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 90, 95,000 at this school. They'll need to pay us.
I figured you were on top of it.
Yeah. I actually want to try to call them and see how much detail they need or if we can just kind of put line items on the invoice form. So, yeah.
Just so we have the reimbursement by.
Yeah, because I know how their, our process and their process.
We should have it by the end of April so we can do it through state budget revision so that when we start paying poll workers in May, funding will be there because right now it's not.
Yeah, there is no funding there.
Now, I'll back up with the Secretary of State, Matt Moore, has done a wonderful job. It used to be recognized nationally for his work.
Yeah.
And he's done a lot of cleaning up.
And then actually at a state level, they've actually recognized Berkeley County as a force to be reckoned with from a voting standpoint.
Yeah, yeah.
And our records are, are as clean as they can possibly be by law.
Was a big turnaround from the way, the way it used to be. It used to be the state that can ask for dead people voting and Matt has cleaned that up a lot.
Well, to give you an idea of where we are from new voters, they, I got the totals for the whole state by county. Each county registered maybe, some counties 10, smaller counties, some counties 100 in the month of December. Berkeley County did 500, 567.
Is that right?
New. New voters.
So we need to record.
In one month.
You as well. A lot of those coming from the schools?
They are coming. Actually, I think that business is bringing those folks here. We're seeing counties, Mineral County, Bayett County, Wetzel County, those people are moving here. So I'm assuming they're moving here because of jobs, whether it's here or whether it's somewhere locally. But we are getting some from the schools, but a lot of it is just simply people moving here and they want to get all their IDs updated so they're, they're registering to vote as well.
It's great that people throughout the state is wanting to stay in the state.
Yep.
And that, that's encouraging to me.
Yep.
Because there's a lot of people from out of state that's moved in. It's going to change the whole culture of Berkeley County.
Yeah, but here lately, in the last month or two, we've really seen a lot of other counties from West Virginia that are moving here. And a lot of Jefferson County has moved into Berkeley, yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Probably going to see a lot from Virginia.
I have not seen that many.
You might in the near future.
But yeah, it could happen.
So how many did you have last year? Because we had over 1,100 new addresses last year. So if we had over 1,100 new addresses, I'd be interested to know how many.
I think that we had been averaging about 400 a month.
400 a month?
A month.
Wow.
December was a big month, 567. But they also, on the other side of that, you know, the Secretary of State's made a, a push to put new cards out, postcards for people that have changed their addresses, either at DMV or the post office. Berkeley County, of course, had 7,000 postcards made. Now, we have gotten people that have moved out of state. So that'll drop the number down initially. Won't drop it a whole lot. But we've also had a lot of changes. People, they change their address and voter registration is the last thing to think of. So sometimes it changes, you know, to update it.
Well, make sure you send us a little bit of a spreadsheet on, on that over the last three years.
Okay. Yeah, because it's actually a spreadsheet form that I just printed off the Secretary of State's website.
We're going to want to send that not only to the Max's office, but we also want to send it to the governor's office.
Yep.
Because, you know, they, they have to understand the situation we're in. And, and, you know, one of the things that we're in, we have to provide public safety. We have to provide schooling. We have to, I know that they're working on the funding for the schooling. But last year's, the school board gets their funding from last year's enrollment.
Sure.
There's nothing in it to, to take care of the
Current year.
Four, 500 new students every year.
Right.
And the same way with, with wrecked parks and wrecked, you know, we have to provide all these services with some help from people from the public that people don't understand that when you're prosperant and you're growing, you have a whole nother set of situations because we got to pay for those year in advance before we see anything.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the voter registration numbers would, would help you get some detail to that.
Right. So we'll do the voters, we'll do the school board enrollment, we'll do, you know, 1,149 new addresses last year alone.
Well, it's really interesting when, when he's saying he averaged 400 because now you're saying we, we've received four times the amount of people registering to vote than we have new addresses.
New addresses, right.
That's really interesting.
And the other thing with statistics to supply from the school, the number of free and reduced lunch and the, also the number of special education because all of that's extra things that have to be provided. So.
So we got to, you know, keep talking to the, to the state and telling them our situation, but it's much better when we supply them with documentation.
Yeah, put numbers to it.
And, you know, it's no different than the governor wanting to know what we don't owe their money. And once we spent an hour and a half with him, he said, I understand.
Right.
Because we have different needs.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Okay. And our fact, but as we got a letter from the state not too long ago, it's basically saying you're paving the way for the rest of the state on innovative ways of doing county business.
Yep.
Alright, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, we'll take a break.
At this time, we'll take them right.
Yeah, she had to go to pre-construction.
Alright, for what?
The roundhouse bathroom.
Whoa, I'd leave too if I'd known that.
She just wants to make sure it's gonna happen.
Alright, we're back in session. Next on our agenda is Tim Zaya, Community Correction Director, request to purchase vehicle with J O T T I P grant funds.
Good morning.
We'll note that this is small.
You haven't you read it ahead there? Request.
Got a couple arms left away from us.
It's really, it's really not that, it's the glare you just.
I understand, I understand. You haven't you read it ahead there, request for purchase of vehicle? Figure I'll go ahead and ask for three though, that's what I got last time. One vehicle, this is the Juvenile Opioid Treatment Intervention and Prevention Program. We're currently recruiting three grant-funded staff members. These staff members will be traveling throughout Berkeley County, middle school and high school, to facilitate substance abuse curriculum to the kids, to identify high-risk children, and to provide interventions to the juveniles and their families. The grant covers the cost of $21,000 for a vehicle for this purpose, and I'm here to request that purchase be made.
How long is the grant due?
Three years, the three-year grant. But we get to keep the fee.
Isn't that, is it about a year that we've had that program in place?
This is brand-new. We were notified, and I think it was September, that we were, we received the award as a Department of Justice grant, but it took a long time for them to finally give us the go-ahead that we could begin the recruitment process and begin to draw from the funds.
It was almost a year ago. For education, Kevin appeared before, asked that we could apply for the grant. So this has been ongoing for about a year, it's the Project Aware grant.
So they haven't been doing any of that since then? Because that was, I thought the understanding was they were gonna start that process.
We asked that the council allow us to apply for the grant. So they applied for the grant, and we just got, we just got the formal notification of the award two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Is this the same?
Well, we were, we were notified that we were, we were recipient of the grant in September, but we got the final notification that we could begin drawing from funds just recently, a couple of weeks ago.
Because we just, that was the three jobs we just posted, basically.
Now, this is different than Johnny Greenberg.
This, this, there are, I believe, $60,000 a year is earmarked to support Project Aware, because the Project Aware grant was no, that wasn't continued, that was a five-year grant that's over. So now, this grant will actually benefit Berkeley County schools enough the funding can go to pay for the therapy for these children who are identified.
I think it supplies one, an employee for the school board's position.
To pay for the therapy.
Right, right.
The therapist, Joni, will continue to operate Project, Project Aware as she hadn't passed. Funding now is gonna come through this.
Yeah, so we got a notification on this about two weeks ago.
Something like that.
I called Joni.
Yep.
Congratulations.
But they just gave us the authority to spend.
Start spending money. Okay, alright. Alright, need a motion to allow Director Zaya to purchase the vehicle off of the grant funds.
So moved.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion on that? If not, all fair say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Just so the council was aware, we do have three 2024 Echo Sports on order through Parsons Ford. We did that through the competitive bidding process. At a cost of $20,557 each. Our intent is just to add the additional one, so that we'll have four do on delivery from them. The other three still have not arrived. So that'll fall, it'll be 100% funded by the grant.
We're gonna have to have a parking lot up there, just put the vehicles.
What he's saying about putting a deck.
Parking deck?
Yeah.
Well, I think great that we're trying to really reach out to the kids. I can't imagine being a child, knowing that my mom and dad are on drugs when I'm sitting there. I don't have anybody to turn to.
And, and we can't necessarily, well, we can't go in and just build some of these environments, but we can better equip them to deal with it. And there's value.
How is your, just, just like to hear a little bit about how your space is working out down there? Because I know we.
Which program?
That's my point. In the day report, or in the day report center down there.
Completely maxed out there. We cannot put one more staff member in that building. Parking is insane. It's, it works. Probably gonna have to ask for some gravel, cover some of the grass areas, park it in. We're gonna keep doing what we gotta do though, to make it, make it work. Still.
Well, the good thing is the facility department has skitch tiers, so you send them down to strip it off.
Did, did we ever put bumper blocks in front of the fence going into the 911 center? Because we talked about bumper blocks in front of the fence, so that people could park in front of the fence on both sides of the gate over there. We talked about that.
Come back on the river, is that?
Originally, no, I'm talking about in the 911 center where you go into a gate.
There's actually a couple of bumper blocks down there, they've been pushed off to the side, they're down there now.
The fence in there on the 911 center that faces the road, right behind the day report center. Their, their fence is 25 feet off of the road.
Right.
And we talked about originally putting some bumper blocks along there so that.
On the outside of the fence.
On the outside of the fence, so that you can pull up towards the fence on both sides of the gate and park in that area.
It would make several more spots.
Yeah, yeah, we've never, we've never done that. And all you have to do is put some bumper blocks out there so that they're not gonna hit the fence, and put some striping out there, and you'd have seven more spots.
The problem that we're having now, if you come, you go to eight of two during the day, we have vehicles on both sides of the access right.
Right, but what I'm thinking is they could, that could be a designated area for all the, all the vans from the DRC. I mean, they could use that for their designated parking area, and then they'd have an area, and it's not right down next to.
Well, I'll reach out to the school board about something. Probably right across the back parking lot.
I thought that was the daycare.
School park, school park.
Yeah, it's gated, but yeah, anything at all, I mean, anything at all helps.
But you could literally, that tomorrow has six or seven more parking spots right there, just by doing that.
One more thing, real quick thing that I know. We spent yesterday, the day yesterday, starting about 8:35, I was assigned with representatives from New Foundation, out of Washington DC. Just Chad and Tim put together a PowerPoint presentation. It kind of summarizes everything that we've done from, since the beginning of 2016, that included home violence, gay rights, community service, and so on. And how, how many clients have been served, and how much money saved the taxpayers. It was, it was a powerful, it was a powerful day. And they left just simply, and their question was, why isn't the state of West Virginia using us as a model? I'll address some of these issues. So Chad's gonna send me the PowerPoint, which I provided to the whole, it was Chad and Susanna, and Tim, and Health Department, Brad, Jamie. About near K-12 health, everyone was involved yesterday, and it was just, it was just a powerful day.
I understand that. Thanks for everybody being part of that. The way that we're leading the state, if not the nation. So, thanks Chad for one of the jobs, Tim and everybody else.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
It's not, it's not a big cut, a big fill right here.
No.
Alright, need to go, and to, need a motion to go to executive session due to county council personnel.
So moved.
Second.
We are in executive session.
You'll have to take a few minutes for that to implement the terrorists.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've spent hours around the table looking at everybody's suggestions. They're writing. Trying to get them all together and distill them into something that makes sense. And that's what we think we've put in what we proposed, but we... None, we looked at yours, Edgins' bills and some of the others.
We changed the MOU. We changed two things with the MOU.
We, and we went through it line by line. We think we've gotten everything in this that's in any of them, so that is not redundant. And we, in reading yours, we look at it, it sounds like it's something, it's a group of visitors who are coming into your station to use your station. That's not the way we look at it. We're part of the same team and we're, we're there not as visitors, but part of your team. Not, not to run your team, not to run the department, but to help you do the job that you have to do. We're there to supplement your effort and we, our people, our paid people run as part of your department when they're there. That's, that's what it is. And, and this is that we will act using your standard operating procedures, doing everything your way. We just don't say it over and over in 10 different ways. This memorandum of understanding is, in this case, for the purpose of following the law to, for you to let us come in and help you so that we can be there. That's, that's all it is. It doesn't require, and these are paid people who work the same rules, regulations, get the same certifications as everybody else. And, and they're not a bunch of, you don't know, these are, these are guys and girls that you work with all the time. And, and this is all you need. We don't need... Do you understand the consequences of not signing the M O U? That's the question.
One thing I wanted to verify is, I know what you said about thirty.
He's asking a question.
So you're not answering my question?
I need to ask the question so I can answer the question.
I don't think you do.
You said that.
Do you understand?
The consequences of not signing the M O U.
What are they?
That we cannot have paid staff in your Fire Department.
I, I knew that sentence terminated.
Okay, so you do understand the consequences.
My question is, is that same ultimatum?
It's not an ultimatum.
Thirty applied to forty as of now.
That, that rule applies to everyone.
We gave Hedgesville a week to, to sign their M O U after we had this meeting. You'll have a week to sign the M O U. If not, you'll get the same letter as thirty, darling.
Okay.
So in the timeframe between now and. We have this draft that they. Can be a good faith effort for one of the M O U.
We have, we, we have one M O U expecting addendums to. The addendum's being. Baker Heights has twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. Back Creek Valley has one paid firefighter, one E M P from the flame blast. There's no reason for an addendum from anybody else.
Well, I believe our board of directors and membership.
Well, then they can be responsible on the fire calls.
That's an eventual, eventual, they may. Again, there hasn't been a good faith. Cooperation. Trying to posture that, that's why I got involved in it. Decided to do that. And that's what, why we're here today is to try to. Just don't feel like we've been given that same.
Well, and we, we've, we've felt the same way for a long time, trying to come up with something and not getting, uh, not getting response. And, and not getting, uh, not getting anywhere, kind of like banging our head on a wall. So at some point, at some point, this has to happen. And we have to move forward. And you have to decide for your department whether or not you want Berkeley County to supply. Staff in your, in your Fire Department. And if you, if you don't want to go along with the M O U, that everybody else is, is, or at least some of, some of, we've had, like I said, the council's already signed it. The Fire Board's signed it, and two of the Fire Departments have signed it. If you're, if you're not going to go along with it, we don't have a choice. That's the M O U we came up with. We've, we've worked on this for almost a year now. At some point, you have to move on and, and say, this is what's going to happen. And we've reached that point. And now you, in, in, in the thirteenth hour, you're, you're standing before us saying, now you want to sit down and negotiate.
We have sent that communications all along. This is the.
Did I interject here? No, it's not as though we ignored. We've spent hours. Around the table, looking at everybody's suggestions. Inviting. Trying to get them all together and distill them into something that makes sense. And that's what we think we've put in what we proposed, but we. None. We looked at. Yours, Hedgesville's, and some of the others.
We changed the M O U. We changed two things with the M O U.
We, and we went through line by line. We think we've gotten everything in this. That's in any of them. So that is not redundant. And, and we, in reading yours, we look at it. It, it sounds like it's something, it's a group. Of visitors who are coming into your station to use your station. That's not the way we look at it. We're part of the same team. And we're, we're there, not as visitors, but part of your team. Not, not to run your team, not to, to run the department, but to help you do the job that you have to do. Uh, we're there to supplement your effort. And, um. We, our people, our paid people run as part of your department when they're there. That's, that's what it is. And, and this is that we will act. Using your standard operating procedures, doing everything your way. We just don't say it over and over in ten different ways. This memorandum of understanding is. In this case, for the purpose of. Following the law to, for you to let us come in and help you. So that we can be there. That's, that's all it is. It doesn't require, and these are paid people who work the same rules, regulations. Get the same certification as everybody else. And, and, uh, they're not. Bunch of who you don't know. These are, these are guys and girls that you work with all the time. And, and. This is all you need. We don't need. Redundant. Because it confuses things, and it does more than that. We learned over a period of time. It invites problems. It raises issues that don't need to be raised. If anytime you want to get out, you can. You get it ended within thirty days, you can just say.
We're out.
We, we're giving you a notice and, and we're out. We don't like the way it's working. But we're not there. These people are not there to cause problems. They're there at the expense of this county's citizenry. And taxpayers to help you do the job that you have just said a minute ago. You're unable to do by yourself. You can use the help. And, and it's not because you don't want to do it by yourself. It's because things have changed. Everybody, you know, husbands and wives both working out. Got kids they've got to deal with. You have other things to do. They're just, they're just not in time. But this is, this is so simple. And I don't think, we've asked everybody, is there something in this that you don't like? The answer has been, no, there's nothing in that we don't like. We just want it. Stuff full of redundancies.
Well, the, the one thing that we have asked is, did some additions be made? I mean, I think one of the biggest problems with this. Process of developing this M O U is there's been no conversation. With some of the stakeholders that are involved in this, that ultimately had the responsibility, just like you guys said.
Wait a second, did we get an invite to the association meetings that's been going on?
Uh, there is a slot.
Did we get an invite to, to the association meetings that's been going on? Did we have a seat? Were we, are we not a stakeholder?
I know for a fact that you have been told that the council can attend the association meeting.
Did we get sent an agenda of your association meeting?
No.
So how do we know what's on the agenda? So if you want to go.
But we're getting all distracted here.
No, no, we're not.
I mean, yeah, we are.
No, we're not.
We started out in two thousand and eleven.
If you're a stakeholder in our meeting, why shouldn't we be a stakeholder at your meeting?
You have been told you can attend the last Monday of the month at nineteen hundred hours, and they alternate between the nine one one center and the Fire Department, for a rotating base.
But we don't get sent an agenda.
I've never, I've never seen that information. I've never seen that information.
Mr. Wilson.
That information has been told to Mr. Copenhagen.
Well.
He's the one that's generally involved in the, in the fire service happening.
Mr. Wilson, which, which fire halls don't cooperate with the Fire Board most of the time? Okay.
Do not cooperate.
Do not cooperate.
In what regards?
Do you want to give the Fire Board just as much hard time as you give us here today?
Well, actually, wait a minute. Bit of information. How often am I laying on myself when you make the question? Not counting this last day after it was breathing out. Well, you're beating people down to direct props, too. That ever happened? That's been almost.
Everybody.
Yeah. So the D E M E R, what else would you make? Who's, which, how's that buddy? I mean, that's been an effort. The template's been approved. It's, it's in the I T, the I T and the nine one one. You were told that a couple of months ago.
Are we talking about three, a template now?
Yes.
Been going on for over three years?
With not all Beddington and not all the Fire Departments, we worked to get that established, which has been done and been turned in.
But been going on over three years, Dave? We don't have three years.
I can't program them. I can't make that kind of stuff happen. There's protocol changes that need to be done at the dispatch center, that I have no control over. We tried to get a meeting set up with the I T committee. We started in December. We were told it was going to be sometime in the middle of January before the tight schedule. And those dates disappeared.
But that's three years.
So.
That's three years into.
We're using those radios. And have been using them since right after they were purchased and delivered under the template that's been in effect for quite a few years now. The template that we're working on is to try to make some improvements for people in incident scenes.
I understand, but.
They, those radios are, are being utilized every day.
Over three years.
For exactly what they were designed for. So this template process is an effort to try to make things a little bit better as this county grows and gets busier. And the demands on incident command when incidents grow, so that we have other options. That template not being in that radio is not affecting the operation of any incident in this county today.
Alright. So what was your questions and concerns about the M O U?
Well, we started out in two thousand and eleven with that being signed. And like Ed said, that had been through a collective effort and going back and forth and everything. It, it says in that that the primary emphasis is to preserve and perpetuate continuation from properly volunteer and to supplement staffing. And that's done through a partnership. And it shall reflect an attitude of cooperation. And each party needs to understand and respect the need for clear policy and procedure.
Is that the S O Gs?
That is the M O U that we signed.
Is that the standard operating agreement, uh, standard operating?
That.
Guidelines that your, your Fire Department has?
Yeah, this is the M O U that was signed to all parties involved in October two thousand and eleven.
Does your, does our M O U not say that we're going to follow that?
That's what I'm getting to. It says it in every M O U that's been submitted. The, the problem we have is. The partnership concept and Bill will sit down and have a conversation about it has not occurred. I'm not seeing a whole lot of cooperation when you say this is the document and the only document that's going to be signed.
We sent.
There's been no opportunity for us to discuss the areas that we want included in that document, which is to follow the need for clear policy. Some of the changes that were put in there. It, and, and I'm not aware of any volunteer department in Berkeley County that said they do not want the paid staff. The really ironic part about this whole mess today is I came to the council January seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. And asked for additional coverage to cover the holidays. Two weeks later, we got the thirty day termination notice because of changing circumstances and advanced, advanced technology.
You, you, that day you was talking about additional, let's, let's be clear about this. That day you talked about additional staffing on, on holidays. You said you complained about us not covering holidays and not knowing when we were going to cover holidays. You also argued about, uh, or made a statement about, um. About the, um.
Can, can I ask a question? The, the statement you just read that you were referring to, that you, you're, you thought should be in the M O U?
Okay.
The M O U that you received from the county that says Berkeley County Fire Board personnel shall adhere to the department's bylaws, policies, standard, standard operating procedures. And standard operating guidelines of the participating V F D. Does that not cover what you just said?
It does.
Does it not, does it not cover what you just said? That was the question.
It covers that, and it, I mean, it's also in there about the cooperation.
Norwood spoke about redundancy. Why would we add all of what you just said when we already have that in the, in the, in the M O U? We already addressed that issue you're talking about in the M O U that we've given you to sign.
In some of these.
Only in a condensed version of it.
But in some of these, it is to follow through with, to create and, and understand the need for a clear policy.
But you have a clear policy. And, and the M O U says the paid staff will, will recognize and follow your clear policy. It says that right in the M O U.
Well, some of the.
So if you have a clear policy, why do you need to put all that verbiage in an M O U when this line? Am I not correct, Norwood? This line, that's the point we, it, it's clear that, that we're following what you're saying needs to be followed. So why are you, why are you bringing, why, why do you not like this? Why do you not like this? Because it doesn't say the same thing over and over to, to, to go down in the weeds, so to speak, of every little issue? Because it clearly states that they're going to follow your policy. If you want something different, then you create it on your own policy and they have to follow it. It's not, it's not that difficult. You don't need it as long as you have this, this paragraph in here that says they're going to follow your policy. So, so all, all of what you have, if you have it in your policy, they're going to follow it. Why does it need to be here?
If they don't follow it, you have the right to get out of the M O U, or we have the right to get out of the M O U.
Right, so.
I don't, I don't think, you all are doing more talking about trying to get out of it than any Fire Department in this county. The. To try to build on the M O U that was there, which when we met through the Fire Association. What was to try to figure out other commonalities among the county that could be addressed in one document. So that no matter where a paid firefighter is working. This is kind of like the baseline, the ground rules, where you don't have to go to three, four, five different documents to find out if it's all the same in every department.
Then, then every, then.
Which is what is lined out in the M O U that was proposed.
But you Fire Departments can do that. If you, if, if, if our M O U, if our M O U says we're going to follow your policy, then all five of you, the Fire Departments get together and create the same policy. And if you all have the same policy, then boom, the, the, the thing is resolved. You don't have five different policies in five different Fire Departments. You have one. You know, you're, you're saying that there's confusion because they all have different policies. So the document that we have should clear up everybody's confusion. And, and I don't think that's correct. I think we need to put it down so that it says we're going to adhere to whatever you do. And then if, if South Berkeley has something different in their policy, then they have to adhere to that. We don't need South Berkeley's information in here, Beddington's information here, Back Creek Valley's information here. It says that we're going to follow the, these, these paid employees are going to follow your rules. What, what else do you want?
But if you have, if you have situations that are similar, maybe every department doesn't have the same verbiage in an S O G. Which obviously opens everything up to interpretation. So if you have common things that you still need to be addressed to, to not only help the volunteers, but also to make life easier for the paid staff. Why not have it in the foundation document so that?
It does. It says they're going to adhere to U S O Gs.
If you. Probably a paid staff involved in the design and just on the boards or your membership and in this meeting.
How more simplified can we make it? What's your fear? What's your, what's your fear? I need to know. What is your fear? I want to know.
We think there's a need to, because the bill thing.
No, I want to know what your fear is.
If things are spelled out.
What is your fear over the, overall? What is your fear? Why are you scared of what the county, why are you scared about the paid staff in the County Council? What's your fear?
I, I don't know who's.
Oh, there's always been a distrust, Ed. I'm sorry.
Well, there is a distrust due to lack of cooperation and so many rumors that are going on.
What's your fear, Dave? You're the ling, the ling reader. What's your fear?
What do you?
What you, you've been a, you've been a.
I feel. There's things in here that need to be addressed so that everybody knows what the rules are.
It's very simple. It says they're going to follow your S O Gs. How much more plain can we make it?
It, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Incorporate some of the stuff in here that have been issues or concerns collectively over the last nine years.
If we sat there and said that we were going to follow your S O Gs, I'd say you'd have a problem with it. But we're saying we're going to follow your S O Gs. Norwood, I'm going to ask you the same question I ask everybody else. What obligations does this County Council have to fund the volunteer fire stations? None. Yet we are willing to say we're going to supply you three point five million dollars either in paid staff or fire fee. And we all was willing to go out to try to get you additional help. But that wasn't doing nothing either. Right? We weren't part of the conversation. Let me tell you how part of that conversation went after it happened. You was trying to tell us how much it was going to cost. Some of your chiefs were trying to tell us that they were going to hire and fire the people that would be employed by the County Council. So we got resistance on that, down to the point where you, you was going to tell the County Council on how much it was going to cost to have additional staff in the fire halls. That's not your job. That's this body's job.
Well, I, I think along with that.
So even then, when we're trying to help, you was wanting to fight us.
That can be contributed so that an adequate funding mechanism is set up.
You don't think we can do that on a, when we set a thirty-four million dollar budget? And we have three hundred something employees?
Based on some of the information, there was stuff left out of that.
I, I find that just simply amazing, Dave. I find it simply amazing that you think that we're not capable of running a budget. To get additional help into volunteers.
I didn't say you're not capable of running a budget.
Did you help us on the one point five million dollar budget that we have now?
There, there's a lot of. Other expenses that need to be factored into that. It did not appear that they were.
I think they were.
But once again.
I think they were.
With a transparent conversation, that stuff could have been discussed and find out whether or not there is or whether or not there isn't.
Well, it sounds like, you know, you, you know. That's fine. You've got a fire hall to run, run it.
You know, here's, here's where we find ourselves. We. Say we didn't have conversations back and forth. Maybe we didn't, we didn't all, all five stations sit around the table. But we did take it in. We spent hours and hours going over it.
Not years.
And, and this represents. Fairly. Something from everybody. This, this is the commonality that we put there. This is all we need you to sign. So that this body can send paid people in to help you. Figure it out. They're not asking anything other than just sign this and let us come in and help you. And I can tell you, because we're still talking about, as late as this morning, we're still talking about. This document, what an M O U is. This is all, this is going to be, this is it. This is the memorandum of understanding that will get you the need. There isn't anything we can add to it. That is going to help us provide you with the help you need. We. We know, we've looked at the statistics. So we know that you're not doing the job that you want to be doing. You're not, you've got too many scratches and too many failures. And it's not your fault. I've talked about that a little. It's not because you don't want to do it. But the fact of the matter is, you're not doing it so that community is not being covered and served with fire protection the way it should. What we want to do is prevent a disaster from occurring.
We want to keep what we had for the last eight years.
And we want it to be. The, the basis of it, of providing that services to the volunteer. But. You need some help. We're willing to give you that help. We're willing to spend the money that it takes. All we ask you to do to get that is to sign this. And if there's a problem with it, and we don't think there will be, because we all want the same thing. if there is a problem, just say we want out or we'll say we want out. We just want to, we're offering, we're offering to give you help to do your job and we're not asking for a bad thing in return except please sign this so that the law will let us run from your station.
So if there's multiple departments that would like to see something in that memorandum of understanding-
There are two departments right now that have expressed some belief that they want something else. The others have signed, the fire boards signed, the councils have signed. And the, and three departments, I've been told, have signed. That leaves two more. That's you and Hedges. We're not going to change this at all. If you want an addendum other than presenting us with everything that was in your original, which we don't consider an addendum, we've got, we have adopted everything. We've said in here, Dan read it to you, "The Berkeley County Fire Personnel shall adhere to the department's bylaws, policies, standard operating procedures, and standard operating guidelines of the participating volunteer fire departments." That's, that's everything you want.
I think every, everybody understands that.
Do you know how, do you know how this council works?
So-
Do you know how this council works?
I'm not-
This council has, we have, we have five stakeholders here and we make a vote. And if three of these stakeholders decide to go, guess what? The other two, we go along with it because the majority has chosen to go ahead. You have seven stakeholders, you have five fire departments, you have the fire board, and you have the county council, seven. Four of them have signed it right now. So that leaves, that leaves the majority or the less than the majority not signing and not agreeing to go along with the majority. So you're saying you have you guys and maybe one other department wants a couple other sentences in this, but it's already been approved by the majority of the stakeholders in this whole MOU, right?
Well, there's perhaps some questions about a couple of signatures.
They've already signed it. The majority has already signed it, right?
Technically, yes. Whether or not under duress or legally might be another question. But what I was trying to ask, if you have a majority of the department saying we think it's a good idea to incorporate this.
We already have the majority signed it and agreed to the document though.
Even if it were-
You don't. You don't have the majority.
Even if it were to be redundant, what would it hurt? If it establishes clear policies and procedures?
We think it is clear, assuming, we're making a big assumption. We're assuming that your operating procedures, your guidelines are clear. And that, and that they're clear enough that even I can understand it as being clear. And we have said, our people are going to abide by what those are. We don't want, we're not, not only do we not want to, we're not going to clutter it up with a bunch of verbiage that is not needed. We just, here's our offer, this is our offer to you. We want to come in and help you. If you want our help, sign. That's, I can't make any sense.
Well, we're just saying the same thing over and over. I mean, that's what we're doing here. We're just repeating the same thing, you know? You have a majority of the stakeholders already agreed to it, you know? If we have a majority, that's what gets passed. That's how it works. And you're standing there saying you don't like a couple of things or you want things. You didn't say you didn't like anything. You said you'd want more added to it. It doesn't make any sense to me why we're still here.
Well, one thing that a membership- verbally communicated throughout by 2050. Now, the stations where the fire, where the fire stations are. One paragraph in here which brings the fire board to be on this document as the form of the original. Coverage for improvements, additions necessary to the county personnel. There's a different funding mechanism whether the county runs a station, excuse me, the fire board runs a station. So discussing that, the membership, and again, this is a, I'm thinking the department's that owns the run station. Heard about that. Pause. Amber, put in Terracotta Line. Just to patch and improve that with the metal things, it's going to be $51,000.
$51,500.
You know what I mean? So if you have a problem, you know, soon you look at our station from the sixties, which is not currently set up to 47%. There's some issues there looking to move it forward as the master plan, you know, down. 47%. There's a reason to get the fire crew increased to add more to it. That's going to leave our master responsibilities for our board of directors. That's one big issue that we're looking at this. And if we had back and forth conversations on this, we could at least discuss that. You know what I mean? But we haven't even had that opportunity.
Does this one statement or this sentence here cover what your thought is? It has, "The Berkeley County Fire Board shall be responsible for the cost of all station improvement"?
Except for-
We could rest on it.
If they're owned by them, they have to pay 10%. So let me ask you something. It's plain and simple. The one, the one thing that we all have to remember is a lot of these, some of these, this is my lot, some of these volunteer fire companies call it my station or our station. That station, you all have put a lot of time in it. We always, as county council members and board members, recognize it for the time and devotion of volunteers. Really, the community owns your fire station, right? It's not owned by Ed Brown or Dave Ryan, right? It's not owned by the county council fire board or the volunteer fire station. The community's the one that paid for that, right? Now, I'm not so sure. And that, so what, what, right now, the fire board pays for all for us to the building. They pay for workers' comp, they pay for fuel, they pay for insurance, they got a grant for the air packs, right? They got new radios. They pay for water, they pay for coffee, they pay for coffee creamer, they pay for hot chocolate, they do all that stuff, right? If you was a, if you was a tenant or you was a landlord and I was a tenant and I have no deed to that property, you hold a deed, do you, do you think it's pretty kind to me to be spending that kind of money on your building that they don't hold a deed to? I'm not even so sure that's legal. We're taking taxpayers' dollars and fees and paying for improvements to a building that they don't own. You guys own it.
And you know, another real simple solution is just sign it over to the fire board. And then they're going to do everything. Why couldn't you do that? That solves the problem. I mean, what's the difference? What's the difference? They're not going to charge you rent for it. I mean, yeah, they're not going to charge you rent for it. And then they do all the maintenance to it. And it's, and it's, you know, it makes total sense to me that the taxpayer dollars that are paying for the fire fee should be able to pay for every, all of them. But it's got to be, it's got to be legal, you know? You can't, you can't take, you can't take public money and spend on, on something that's, that's not clearly owned by the public. It's not, you know, it's, it's, it's money coming into the county to pay bills and they're spending. And I'm, I'm, I'm along with Doug. I don't know if it's even legal for the, for that money to be spent on, on a, on a building that's not owned by the fire board.
So you think what's been in practice since 1986?
Don't go there with me. Don't go there with me.
I mean, has it been illegal the whole time?
When you say we've done this our whole life, why would we change it? That's why the whole world, it takes forever to evolve, you know? Because people with that mindset that, that we've done this forever, why would we change? Well, because there's a reason to change, to move on, to do things better than we did before. Just because it was done a certain way 20 years ago doesn't mean it was the right way, you know? You look at ways to make, you didn't have-
I fully understand that when you look at-
You didn't have paid staff in there 25, 35 months ago.
What happens with this agreement, if there's a remodel or renovation that's required, it's more than what the department can, that 10% is more than what they can pay.
Then, then you, then you do like South Berkeley did when the building was built down there. You have fundraisers and do it. Well, then, yeah, so then what's the problem? You know, if, if you don't like it.
But I mean, what happens when you don't, you don't have that 10% to pay for that?
It seems to me that that argument is, I want it both ways, sir. I want to call myself a volunteer, we want to keep the volunteers. But going to do it different than we've always done it. It used to be, I remember when I lived in Van West, we had a little tiny community of 600 people and its own fire department, that if they, whatever they needed, they went out and had a fundraiser. They held the boot out on the street. They did everything they could do to do that. That's part of being a volunteer. 10%? Where, you know, the county's willing to give you 90% of what it costs to fix the place up for you? If you own the place.
Extended staff, extended staff.
Extended staff to meet your obligation? And you're fessing because you might have to raise 10%. If you can't raise it, what usually happens if you can't raise it?
You come back to the council and you-
My concern with that is- One of my concerns is, I mean, and that's generally how it would work, but it seems like pretty much the line of discussion today is you buy by this or you're going, you just don't want anything. And you all know that's clearly not the case. But, you know, if it's something where a department, if they can't handle it, you say, well, figure it out or we're pulling the people.
Dave, it's pretty obvious. It's, you know, all you want to do is argue, right?
No, sir, not really.
Our document says we're going to follow all your guidelines, all your ruling. If you don't like it, you've got 30 days to get out. Plain and simple. Covers everything.
I have a suggestion, which seems to be reasonable, so can we sit down and have a meeting and work on it?
We've been talking about it for hour and 10 minutes now.
Well, I don't think we're going to handle this in the adversary. You know, again, we had a process.
So, so, so you're suggesting that, that we throw out our document, that we've already got the majority to agree upon because we have one fire department that wants to do something different? That's what you're suggesting, right? Does that, does that make any sense, really? I mean, think about it. Does it really make any sense that the majority's already, okay, with going, going forward with what we have, we should throw out everything, all the progress that we've made so far and start over? Does that make sense?
We sent two signs, I'm assuming we have it.
I got indications from the meeting that we had at Back Creek Valley last week that they, they didn't seem like they had any objections to it with the chief and gentlemen sitting there. Now, what their membership's doing and what they've done, I have no idea.
It was really not, no.
Hey, Dave, you know what? I can tell you pretty much one thing I'm sure of, that we're not going to figure this thing out between you and me.
Well, the majority's already signed, you know? You have seven stakeholders that are involved in this MOU and four of them have already agreed, you know? I mean, and, and, and we anticipate that a fifth one will be doing it shortly. Hopefully, a sixth one will.
Before tomorrow, 5 o'clock.
So I guess we'll, we'll see where we're at with that, but I don't know. It doesn't make any sense at all, after spending almost a year trying to get to this point, that we've got the majority already signed and ready to move forward and because of one fire department, we trash everything and start over.
We're trashing everything.
No, we have to, no, no, no. We've already got it signed. So then we got to go back to everybody else and get everybody else to agree with whatever you want to put in it. That's the point, you know? Yep.
Come up front, Honner, please.
We would not read all this, have a fire board say for everything in here.
You what?
We would not go off of this.
Right.
Loss of state funds. We don't even incorporate state funds. I could try and steal something. You all get $4,000. We don't incorporate that into our budgets. That's 50 grand, 40 to 40. Where that money goes.
Well, and since you brought that up, well, since you brought that up, just so you all understand, we told the other fire departments the same thing. State auditor has made it very clear that your whole audit and finances will be part of our audit. All right? So to let you know, we need a copy of your audit every year before our audits do.
He goes down, I think.
Well, I'm not saying it, but you've never, no one's ever been willing to give them over, turn them over. Matter of fact, I've been told by one fire auditor, you're never going to get them. But we will get them because it's going to, it's part of the law, the state auditor has made that very clear, that that's part of our audit.
Now, I asked Gary Wine to come up here and he looks like he's getting bored waiting upon it. So, right, right here's the graph. Right here's the graph. And I think the left-hand column, Gary, is evenings and weekends for Beddington. Is that correct?
6 P to 6 A, yes, sir.
All right. So, so you have a, out of 100, 100% that's your graph, I'm trying to read it, 59.9% success rate, win percentage?
Let's, let's, let's say something first, that, that we, we really appreciate what the volunteers do and that the reason that I believe they're having difficulties making them is just because of the sheer amount of calls. You can only do so much with the amount of time that you're allowed to volunteer, right?
We've always said that.
Right, right. But I want to make that clear because, because the volunteers are, they do a great job of great service for the community. And, you know, they're in, at no point do we ever want to, to make a, make it feel like they're not doing what they should be doing because they're doing all they can do.
And that's why the call volume from 1980 somewhere from 300 some calls to 1,100 to 1,300, right? We understand why. We, I don't know how much more clear I can make it. I appreciate each and every one of the volunteers out there, right? But we're trying to, it seems like we're getting a battle one accepting help, so-
Sorry for interrupting.
No, but 59% success, uh, win percentage, 6 P M. to 6 A, uh, 6 P M. to 6 A M. Win, it's 100% volunteer. 31.1% scratch percentage, 9% failure rate. And scratch percentage means that the truck's not getting out the door in five minutes. Anything less than five minutes, a failure percentage means it never went out. Now, go to 6 A M., 6 P M. 6 A M., 6 P M. with paid staff there to assist your fire hall. 94.9% win percentage. 3.4%. No, 7% scratch, uh, scratch percentage and a-
3.4 is the scratch and the 7% is failure.
And what is it, .7? 1.7 failure. That's the difference between having paid staff to help you get the truck out the door. Plain and simple, gentlemen. We're not here to run you out of your fire department. We're not here to hinder you, right? We're here to help you and that, that shows it. I don't know what more, not only are we giving paid staff, but you, if you got $2.5 million in fire fees that go out between five fire halls, yes, we have an office staff to help, to- that go out between five fire hauls, yes, we have an office staff to help, to, to do that, but we don't need them if we're not collecting the fee. So I don't care how you look at it, between two point five and one point five million dollars, I think my math is about right, at three quarters of a million dollars per fire haul. All right? Does this count in council, those that, as Mr. Bentley told you, we have no obligation to do? None whatsoever. So all this sense and all this fear that we're here to try to run you out of your fire department? I'm sorry. It's false. If we is here to run you out, why do, why do, why we build South Berkeley a brand-new fire haul? Why do we build, why are we in the process of building Beddington a brand-new fire haul? I'm sorry, Baker Heights, why? And actually, Baker Heights volunteer hasn't sent the paid staff one twenty-four seven, has improved people being there. They want to be there. It's better than it's ever been. So I don't, I'm sorry, guys, you're wearing me out. No, there's people in the fire halls, volunteers, in the day room. I was down there the other night, there's four of them in the day room to help the paid staff. You know, Ed, Dave, I'm sorry. I don't think we're going to make progress here. You got a week to sign the document, you don't get, you'll get the same letter that, that had to go out. All right? Plain and simple. We, we, we sent documentation out, we got feedback back, we modified our documentation so it wouldn't be so redundant, right? You're asking us, I, I, I think everybody understands, when you read the paragraph that Vice President Delia was read, and Mr. Bentley read to you, it says, we're going to follow your policies and procedures, period. I don't know what more it needs to say.
We're, we're not willing to go backwards, and that's what you're asking. You're asking to, to tell all the, everybody, all four stakeholders that have already signed and moved this document forward to, to get rid of that document because we're going to start all over. And we're not willing to go backwards, you know? We've gotten, we've gotten this far, we need to keep going in this direction so that we can, we can come in compliance with, with the legislative rule that says we have to have an MOU.
You know, asking for the group allegiance, that's what our board of membership want, you know? And that's what we've been asking for a long, you know, having a schedule that cancel for various reasons. We're asking for now?
Well, that's, that, that's one, that's one side of the story. I don't, it, you know, from, from my understanding, you really haven't been trying.
Yeah, what this, why didn't you miss it, Paul?
Well, you know, I, I, I was, I was told that you, you gave, uh, President Kopenhever twenty minutes that he could come down and talk to you, and he could only have twenty minutes in your meeting, you know? How long have we been here today, you know? We didn't give a timeline, we, and we're here all the time. Every Thursday, we're here, you know? If you guys have an issue, you, you can't tell me, you can't find us because on Thursday, you could come down here, you could call Mr. Davis and ask to be on the agenda anytime. And we've done this for almost a year, and this is where we're at. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I don't know about the rest of them, but as far as I'm concerned, I'm not willing to go backwards. We've gotten to this point, we need to keep moving forward.
Can I say one?
I got to say everything I've read in both of them, there, there's too much redundancy in it. And the one, the big council put together seems to cover everything. I can't, I sound blind as hell. And these two, I don't see the big difference in signing this document compared to what we do. Because we are not here to take anything away from that stage. I'm not.
Well, and if anything doesn't work right, somebody in the paid crew is, are acting like one of you all? Or come, complain to anybody yet?
It comes from lizard jobs, so, what's going on with the field today? Back and forth, great. I mean, people in the county, I work, I, I work all over the county, all the departments. And it's fantastic. It seems, you know, obviously, this, whatever problems is happening, you know, at our levels. I guess that's something, you know, that we all need to work on, and not be back here again in the future. I mean, there's, you know, everybody's got opinions, everybody's got frustrations, we need to avoid that. I have had a good process, you know, for this to happen, and in eight years, you know, that has gone away. So maybe, you know, we need to figure out how to get that better. Because there's not just one person.
Take a chance on, take a chance on it, take a chance. You, the worst you could do is find out.
It works.
I'm screwy, you get out of there thirty days.
Our membership, you know, I called at, maybe seven o'clock. We, uh, got here today, so it would be like, it's, it's a decision, obviously.
What, what, we, Layla was trying to say something.
Well, you know, I've been in a lot of things, particularly with the school board and all these other things, and a lot of meetings. An MOU, when you start putting together a large group, the most efficient one is the one that addresses that everybody is going to work under the rules of that particular one. Otherwise, you get into all these little particular things, it's nitpicky and it gets to be territorial. One of my favorite things is when I worked with some organizations trying to get a move, I was sick and tired of fifties. So right now, it seems that we've got a fifth one that wants to hold on to something. That for the betterment of the county, you're looking at a general rule that says that we're going to provide service and they must comply with your regulations. That, to me, is the best of both worlds. And you have a thirty-day out. I don't know, uh, having, because I've worked on all kinds of things from the health department to the school board, and that, that, to me, is the best way to go.
I appreciate you, you know, what you're saying, and so, hundreds of people have voted on the one that was sent in, signed after your party, board of directors, all the membership members, the partners. So, you know, obviously, you know, there's a lot of people, they're, you know, period, you know, slightly different. And we're all in touch with that. But, so that's where we're at, you know, these people have worked on this, they have a different opinion, you know?
Do you have a hundred people that, or at Beddington, you're telling me?
I'm talking about Pennsyl, Beddington, they validate, yeah, something. South Berkeley addressing this in, in the future, because they didn't get a chance to. They're going to at least look at it from people. I'm just saying, and, and that's up to their bylaws and what's happening in the future. But, you know, I know there are, you know, terms, but they just, when they're on top, you know, so. And they have to go and, and see, you know, how they feel about it, they didn't get that out of the box.
Next, the lawyer's sentence.
Wait a second.
Hold on a minute.
Mr. Farhart?
The next lawyer's sentence, since this agreement cannot address every policy or procedural issue that may be encountered, it is understood that formal revisions or addendums to this agreement may be required by and of time. Revisions may be made by mutual written agreement of the parties affected. So why can't they sign it and with the realization that revision?
If they found something doesn't work?
Exactly.
Yeah, I don't, that's, that's the part I don't get. You know, give it a try, and then we can follow that line.
The concern is, is what we experienced this past year, we haven't had that opportunity, you know, to have a revision that is read upon. We haven't had that.
Have you had something come up that's been a real problem working with paid people?
Some of the areas that have been of, of a concern and other areas are addressed in what has been requested in the MOU that we submitted. I mean, generally, there's, there is not an issue.
That's what I thought, there's not an issue. That's what she was saying, it's worked great.
Today.
So, 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 take a chance on it. And if there's something wrong, come back and see us.
Yeah, but have documentation what's wrong.
But show us, show us something concrete that we can fix. There is anything to fix right now. This is it, take it or leave it.
You know, blinds things out a little bit from the problems that did exist, you know, that have been resolved. That's why it's in there, that's why everybody agreed that, it's nice and simple. When anybody on the volunteer side and paid fire works together, they can read them, you know? You know, any, any fire station, for example.
I'll, we'll, we'll say it again for the fourth time, Ed, one paragraph says everything it needs to say. Our paid staff is going to follow your bylaws, your standard operating. Right?
If you got something that you want, then we're just adding it in there.
You know? It's up to you, and if, if they don't follow it, pick them out. It's your policy. What more do you want? I don't understand it.
What, what do you do with volunteers that come and don't follow your policy? You just let them stay?
They get suspended or terminated.
Huh?
Get suspended or terminated.
So that's the same thing? What, what are we talking different here?
Well, the one thing that.
We're, we're not talking any different, it's the same thing, they're going to follow your policy.
Holiday coverage.
Huh?
And there's nothing in here to address that.
Address what?
I've already told you, we have, it, it has a schedule of what holidays we're working.
Right.
That's the holidays we work. You know, we, we, you sat there and asked for help, but then the fire station says, we're not going to help you. We, we, we want more help, we like what's happening during the day, we want to extend it to evening and weekends and holidays. We're not going to help you get the petition signed. We're not going to help you raise the money, but we're going to tell you what we want. I'm sorry, Dave, that doesn't work.
Well, and, and mostly, when all that came to light, we found out about through other meetings, it wasn't through any communication.
No, we've had fire departments tell us that we're not going to help you sign, get the petition signed. You know what? We're helping you. Want to slap us in the face or kick us in the butt? It's your responsibility at the end of the day, Dave. Yours, the chief.
We also need to know what's going on, too.
Hunter, is everything, is every, is, is everything like this in, in, in the fire board? Do you have to, do you have to argue over every, everything that comes up? Why in the, why in the world are you volunteering for that job? Don't think you volunteer, we talked to you.
Now, most parts, needs have gotten better.
Baker Heights.
Baker Heights.
No, Beddington, come on, twenty, thirty.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
As we do that longer in plan.
Yeah. And, and you know, you know what really doesn't, what just baffles my mind here is that there's, that it's, it's, it's a volunteer station, it belongs to the community regardless of any way you look at it. And, and there's, there's verbiage in this thing that says that they'll pay for all the repairs. If I was, if I was on your board, I'd be like, guys, let's figure out how to donate this thing to the fire board. Let them pay for everything that needs to be done, you know? I, I, I'd be fighting for that. And then the money you use, that you get raised from volunteer, from boot drives, or whatever it is you're doing fundraisers, you can use for other things. Why would that, why does that not make sense? But, yeah, I, I mean, I'm looking at it from a business standpoint of view. And from a business standpoint of view, it makes total sense to do that to me. Well, you know, why, why are you going to fight over something that, that it doesn't need? You win if you, if you donated because you still got it. It's like somebody telling me, yeah, well, you, you, you give me your office, I'll pay all the expenses and everything, you can use it forever. I'd be like, heck, yeah, man. Take that thing, yeah. Yeah, that's right, make sure the, the heat stays on, it's cold outside.
Kind of like the seniors said.
Yeah, exactly. Well, that's, that's pretty much about it, so.
I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know where else we're at today.
Mr. President, I need direction. Today is the twenty-third. If consensus of the council is not to modify the MOU, MOU.
That's very clear.
To stay where, one that's been presented is the one that will be acceptable. So how do you want me to proceed?
They have a week to sign it.
Till five o'clock P M. on the thirty-first of January.
And then they don't get the same letters as, as you broke up.
That doesn't occur, then we send the letter saying that, effective February the tenth, Monday morning, February the tenth, the stamp will be reassigned.
Whatever the timeline was on third.
Okay, that's the timeline. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. You got anything to add? Any items from the public? All right, Mr. Farhart?
Mr. President, move to recess.